We call a meeting to order. If we can have Don Norris with First Baptist Church.
Join me in prayer, please. Father, we're coming together to do a work, Father, that you have created us to do and to give civil government, Lord, to, in order to maintain order throughout our community. And I pray for each one of these that represent us, that you would grant them wisdom as they hear and discuss and make decisions. Father, we're going to say some pledges that talk about that we are under your lordship, your kingship. So, Father, I pray that we will truly be a people to seek your face, seek your wisdom, even this evening. And I pray this in the strong and wonderful name of our Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Next, we will have Horse Scout troop 1908 present our colors.
Color guard Hall. Color guard, also colors. I'd just please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Please release the flag of the United States of America into the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter Minson, any for the Texas pledge.
On our honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one nation indivisible.
Two. Color guard about this. Color guard, return the post.
Before you gentlemen leave, I would like to introduce you. Come on back. Estefan Lopez, if you would, raise your hand. Gabriel Kinsey. Chris Flippin. Daniel Agary. And Isaac Frito. Would you please help me introduce you? Thank you all very much. You may be seated. Okay, now we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? So moved. Here, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to other council actions. Bid award, consider award of contract to the 2016 seal coat job. Irvine, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of Council. This item is to consider award of contract for 2016 seal coat. The bids were, for this project, were opened on March 8, 2016, and we had two responsive bids for this project, and the lowest responsive bidder was Ronald Wagner in the amount of eight hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. The bid was within twelve percent of our estimate, and our estimate for this project was one million dollars. The purpose of this project is to seal coat approximately four hundred thirty-seven thousand square yard of city streets, which is approximately fourteen miles. The Public Force Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to Ronald Wagner in the amount of eight hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, and request approval of expenditure up to one million dollars. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. Iran, we do have a warranty on this seal coat, right? And on last year's seal coating, we have checked to make sure that everything is okay?
Yes, we did, and we are satisfied with last year's seal coat.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No.
We have a second? Second? Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under resolution, consider the award of the contract for the 2016 pavement rejuvenization. Irvine.
The Public Force Street Division is planning to use pavement restoration technique in low seal coat for a portion of the pavement preventive maintenance program for seven times. This product is approximately at the cost of seal coat per square yard and offers a good service life. It is designed to be applied to low watered streets, and our intent is to use it on many of the streets that have not been seal coated or have not been sealed in a number of years. And we are going to do approximately ten linear miles this year. Payment Restoration Incorporated from Burnet, Texas is the provider of reclaimed material in the state of Texas, and staff recommends award of contract to Payment Restoration Incorporated as the sole provider of this material for the contract amount of six hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
So.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Iran. Next, we'll consider the appointment to vacant City Council District Number One. Just long, do you have any words?
Yes, I would. The council has been charged with the absence of Reverend McNeil that they are responsible for appointing a representative for his position, and it is by understanding that they are going to consider this an executive session. However, the law provides that any potential applicant can request that they be considered in open session and not in executive session, and if there are any here, any of the applicants that choose that, then please indicate so. Thank you.
I would like for my interview to be in the open.
Okay.
I have a question of the session as well.
Okay. Go ahead and lay down some ground rules. We do, are going to allow public comment. If you have not filled out a card, please fill out a card. I do have a stack right now. We're going to limit that to three minutes, in essence of time, and that's it, and we'll get started. First card is Odell Crawford. You looked shocked when I called you.
First and not last, you know. Anyway, good evening, it is a pleasure to be before the council and before the citizens of the county and the city of Odessa. I just want to say that I feel that this is one of the most important positions that we have right now on the council that does need to be filled because it does represent our precinct, our district as such. And in doing so, my thing is that I want to just say, and not without calling any one person's name, but I do think that because of the actions, I know that this council will have to take on some very important agenda items that's going to be affecting District One, that I feel that number one, that we need somebody in the position that does know how to look at what is going on in the area. I feel that there are people who are qualified, but I feel that there's one person may be more qualified than the other, and I feel that we need to take a serious look at that individual because of what the potential is for benefits that will come back to the community, and I feel that someone who has a knowledge of what goes on in the council meetings as well as our community will be someone that should be appointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next is Raymond Amundares.
Thanks, Raymond Amundares. Where's the man here? We're talking about Huru four, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be for Jose Manuelos, and I believe that he can bring a lot to the council, not only he's got the experience and he's got the will to do things that the council needs to do, and the guidance also. I know you guys have a tough job, and I've guys have been there for a long time, but I think this guy will be very, very beneficial to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Gavin Norris.
Good afternoon, council. Each of you individually, your honor, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt a little bit. I think, I would just say that to you all, we know you have a difficult challenge and task tonight in deciding. I think for candidates, it takes a lot of fortitude to take the opportunity to put your name in the hat for something like this, and so that can't be missed. And we know that there's several candidates, which is exciting because there's interest in the position. I do think it's important, though, that we take a look, and it's what's been said at the last meeting and at the meeting that we had with the mayor last week, that qualifications matter. So I would ask that when you all go back to make this decision, you consider heavily the qualifications, and then don't forget that there was a petition for someone, and as we mentioned to the mayor, the amount of people who sent in a petition is equivalent to the amount of folks actually vote in the district. So that should be taken into major consideration when you all go back to vote. I think there's some folks who filled out applications who didn't put their qualifications. You all have to go back to decide that, but if they can't provide their qualifications, I'm not sure if that qualifies them to be a person to even consider. I would just say this ending that I think District One has spoken, and I would hope that you all would take into consideration who District One has said, and take that in consideration. Again, experience matters. While we have a lot of qualified candidates, if someone doesn't make it tonight, they have the opportunity to run in the election in November, and that is the option as well. So I hope you all will take that in consideration, and thank you again for the hard test that you have.
Thank you very much. Next is Malcolm Hamilton.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak today. I'll be just very brief. Of course, last meeting I spoke about supporting Joanne Davenport-Lilton for the position simply because of her experience and her familiarity with District One. The other candidates that I know of to this day, I don't understand their experience or their grassroots efforts in the community, so I'm just here to support Joanne Davenport. And I also would ask a question that, why is it that you guys cannot vote out here?
We will vote out here.
We have to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Gene Collins.
To Mayor Turner, distinguished members of this city council, the staff, I'm Gene Collins, a native of Odessa. I have a lot of interest in place one. I have a business located there, I have a church there, I have a family home there. I've done a lot of work there through the years, and I'm certainly passionate about the development of that area. One of the things that has not been mentioned this evening is the reason that we're here. A very capable, intelligent man fell on some hard times that were not his fault, but he also showed passion for this community. In my business with him, he still has a passion for Odessa, and he would like to see some of the things that he started continue. We're talking about qualifications. No one has been at this council chamber since Roger T. McNeil was elected, more than his wife, who, Mayor, like your wife sitting back in the audience, was critiquing everything that went on. And I'm sure that when they went home, they also talked about what was a discussed here at council meeting. She certainly has skin in the game because they've gone through an election and the people spoke, and he was chosen. I think the honorable thing to do for this council, the right thing, the Christian thing to do, is to consider the fact that Roger T. McNeil served well and because of his illness cannot serve, but his wish is that his wife continue the legacy that he started, support the programs that he started, and also be a conduit for him to continue to do what he was elected to do nearly four years ago. He still has a passion for this group. He loves you all very much, and he certainly wants to be a part as long as the Lord will allow him to continue. And I think that these things surely should be considered for a great public servant, Roger T. McNeil. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is Javier Hoven.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I, like many of the residents, I do not live in District One, even though I was raised there, my parents did live there, but I want to discuss real quick, ask a question. You said something about executive session. Has the council made a decision? It still needs to be a motion, a second going to executive session, discuss these appointments or the candidates, or is this process going to be public? And the reason why I ask that is that the council took a road to make this an election. By not conducting an election and making an appointment, four individuals that sit in the seat are the electorate, mayor being the tiebreaker, because there are four positions. You're deciding tonight, this is an election, you have candidates that made, came here, made applications. Now, two of them chose to be public, the others want to be private. It's a public election, even though in the election, it's public, it's debated, the community vets the individuals, the vote itself is private, but it's a private individual, but the results are public, the discussions are public. I'm asking for this council to make the process public. We need to know not only the end result of who is appointed, but we need to know how each individual on this council got from point A to point B. The discussion, the process, is as important, if not more important, than the end result because we need to know where you stand. Because right now, we split between the four seats. You have represented District One. Individuals that are coming here from District One are seeking representation. You are their representative. You're representative. You can't do it in executive session. I've seen councils in the past go into executive session, discuss appointees that were not employees. There's an individual here that he was discussing private when he should have never been. That is an illegal act. I'm not saying, or in any form is saying that this is illegal, but I am impolting you not to take this route. Councils in the past have dealt with it. 1996, Roger Herr was appointed, there was never a public process, the mayor made a recommendation, we appointed him there. 1999, when I resigned, Fan Draxler himself said that I, because resigned, did not have a right to appoint a successor or to even recommend because I forfeited that right. The one elected representing District Five for two terms was said that I forfeited, and so the council went on to model a social entity that was taking money from public and made a recommendation who's going to represent District Five and not the citizens themselves. And unfortunately, we had, unfortunately, untimely deaths, the council chose to go in the elective process. The people chose. I know we're in a conundrum here because we're so close to June and then November elections. So you're opposed to that dilemma, and I understand you've taken the route of an appointment. I implore you, and I ask you, Mr. Garnett, since you are my representative, to stay in the public, to discuss the process, to make it public, and let me debate about how you're back to that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, please hold it down. Next is Annie Oliver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wonder why I'm nervous, I deal with babies all day long. I just want to say, the little time that I've been, it started out with me watching over the park and things that was happening in the park, I actually got involved. It's been about five years ago. And the time that I've been in, I've learned a few things, and I'm not an expert on what everybody's saying, but I can tell you what I feel. And my understanding is this, we need someone who already know the community, who's been up and down, who knows the people in our precinct. We need someone who knows us and we have one-on-one contact with, and I'm going to call the name, I just feel like Ms. Joanne Davenport-Lilton would be fantastic for someone that's not even on the seat. She gets in the community, she goes out and she does things to try to make things better for us, and I just feel like that she would be fantastic. And I'm not understanding why it's dragging like this because if the seat doesn't hurry up and get filled by November, I don't know what y'all would have decided, but I don't think it's right to put someone in our community or in our precinct that really don't know us, that hasn't came into the community and got to know the people. We need someone that will know us. It's just like you wouldn't want someone in your house that you didn't know and don't know anything about what's going on in your home. We don't want anyone just coming in there, just making all kinds of decisions and not knowing what we're all about. It's all about the people. That's what it's all about. It's all about the people, and we have rights, my right is that I'm speaking up, saying who I know, who I've talked to, who I, and I've talked with other people, now don't get me wrong, and, but when I listen to her, it's about us, and that's what we want. We want someone who cares about us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Burak.
Good evening, everyone. And I thank you all for letting me allow me to speak again. And Mayor, I'm glad to see you again. The thing that I'm so adamant about is, like, the first week we came, we were told to go get our people, we got two hundred and fifty, eighty-five people to sign a petition. So what happened to our petition is the first thing I'm not understanding, so that just goes away because we had a new thing to come out with the application. So the petition doesn't work anymore, right? That's just, you don't...
The petition's in the record.
The petition is in the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was the number one thing I wanted to ask you about. And then you five people that are on the council, I mean, you all don't even live in District One, so do you all consider what we all are coming back fighting for because District One needs someone that can represent us? And this is what we started coming out again for, and you told us when we first came out. We're glad that you people came out because we want to hear from you all. Okay, you're hearing from us, and actually, first and foremost, I believe that this is what we should be able to voice our opinion. We need someone that knows the district, has fought for the district, is out there doing the footwork, the groundwork, as they say, ground zero, you know, boots on the ground. That's what Joanne is about, boots on the ground. Yes, now, Robert McNeil, R.T. McNeil, Mr. McNeil, has done a wonderful job in the community because he's a leader, he's a pastor. We all fellowship together, and once in a while, one point in time, we all get together, all the churches get together and fellowship. I know, I love him. I'm sorry, you see, and I'm praying, David, and God, we'll do it, we'll get there. But we need somebody that knows, and you all called Joanne first, it's from what I was told. Forgive me if I'm, if I don't know my work or my words right, if I've got the wrong information, then correct me. But I was told that she was called, and we need somebody in this seat, we need somebody in this seat. Then, when she comes to fill the seat, then it's a problem. We want Joanne.
Thank you. Next is Tommy Haynes.
Mayor, council, I mean, I just want to say, I am here in support of Ms. Lilton. And the reason why I'm here to support Ms. Lilton is because I know her work, I worked beside her, I know what she's capable of doing, I know how she handled things, and I think that by her being a candidate for this position was a great thing to come back to, and I just say, when y'all go to vote, that you take her qualifications into consideration because I feel that she is well qualified for the position, and I hope that you will feel the same way once you make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more?
I have not received any more cards.
Let's go ahead and we can take care of the first two that want to do it in public.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think when people talk, that the other people, candidates need to be listening to what they say because...
What do you think, Claire?
I don't think that's right.
Well, if it's in public, it's public for me.
Okay. What are you, I'm sorry, Miss Grant.
Okay, but what I would say, I don't, to me, I don't think it would be fair for all of the candidates, if some of them choose to speak in here publicly, I don't think it's fair for all the candidates to listen to them.
No, it has, if it's public, it's public, so...
I would rather whisper in the ass than after, you know, because frankly, when you listen to other people, you pick up information you might not know, and you can use that for your interview. I just don't think it's right.
What do you think, Bill?
I think we need to allow the people that chose to do it public, do it public, and then, you know, the ones that chose private, do them private, and in that way, we have a little bit of time to elaborate, you know, deliberate a little bit, and then make the decision.
Mike, quickening.
I don't mind doing it all public, or if somebody's not comfortable doing it in public and want to do it in private, I think that's fine also, because I'm good with doing it all right here.
I am too. I think it would be very good if you got to hear what everybody had to say.
Okay. We did leave some applications in there. We get staff to go get the applications.
Sure.
What do you think, Duj?
You know, I think, first of all, I really think all five of the applications have been filed. I think that in its foremost, I appreciate what they have done to show an interest in serving for the District One. You know, I think they also have the right to choose the way they like to be interviewed. You know, and I think according to law, it can be done at one point, actually.
Yes.
Well, then...
I would take then, if you would be that point, and I would say that you probably ought to do the three first, and then, since the other two have chosen to do it public, do those two last, if that would be the so-called chosen.
If that's a concern of yours, Miss Grant, maybe that will help.
That would be fine with me. I mean, is there anybody else out there that wants to do it in public?
If Ms. Davenport wants to be in public? And Ms. Vanderhoek? Okay, in public.
So we go...
Mr. Horace, would you want to do it in council chambers, or do you want to do it in executive session?
Executive session.
Executive session, okay. Mr., I apologize, I'm going to butcher this name. Ben Awelos?
That's right.
Would you like it in here, or would you like it in there?
In chambers.
In chambers, okay. Ms. McNeil, would you like it? In chamber? Okay.
I believe that we need to elect executive session and to interview the three that have chose to be in chamber.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session. Okay, it is seven thirty-four, we are now coming out of executive session. Do I have a motion to come?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Ramallo, can you call the next person?
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor.
We're just gonna ask any questions, and then go ahead and start with Mike.
Okay. We're just gonna ask you the same questions that we asked back with other candidates, so we're not gonna spring anything...anything new on you, it'll be the same question. Mine is...
Well, hang on, wait just a minute. Do we have the other candidate in here? I don't think we should...
It's public, it's public. Like Claire said.
Yeah, you're allowed to be in.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
All right.
All right.
My question with Ms. Joanne would be, why do you wish to serve as a District One representative?
Because I love the city of Odessa, I love the citizens in District One. I've been there before, I have a good rapport with them. I see a lot of things that need to be done in District One. And although I am active in the community and I can get things done, but not being at the table on the council, I need to be, or there needs...I need to be on the council to make some of those things that need to happen, happen.
Okay. I'm just going through the checklist for eligibility requirements. So you've already filled this out, but I just want to get it...ask the questions again. You are a citizen of the U.S.?
Yes, sir.
You just barely made the age requirement, you're just over nineteen?
Yes, sir. Eighteen and a half.
Eighteen and a half. You're good, because I'm not asking a lady their age.
You're somewhat man.
Have you been determined totally mentally incapacitated by final judgment of court?
Not by the court, but by some people.
Guilty here. Have you been determined partially mentally incapacitated by final judgment? Okay. Have you been finally convicted of a felony for which you were not pardoned? Have you resided continuously in the state for twelve months? Have you resided in District One for six months? And have you been registered to vote in District One? Then that's the questions I have.
Mrs. Davenport-Littleton, what organizations have you served within the city during your time here?
I've been president of the Castanet Social Civics and Arts Club for approximately fifteen years. I've been president of the Black Cultural Council of Odessa since nineteen ninety-seven. I've been affiliated with a lot of different churches. Nineteen...during my tenure on the council, I was the founder and president of the Gertrude Bruce Historical Association. I was a main street board. During my tenure on the council, I served on the National Legal Cities. I served on Attorney Dan Morales's Advisory Board. I served on...turn around Odessa, I served on many, many boards.
Great.
Thank you.
Davenport, how you doing today?
Fine.
Man, it's kinda cut the knife, you know, it's tension in the room. But I want to say thank you, and at the time, I only knew that there was only two candidates, so I actually had the pleasure of having breakfast with you and Benouelos, and I got to actually sit down and break bread with you, and thank you for taking the time to do that, so...
Thank you for asking.
At the end of the day, you know, my question to all the candidates is, are you familiar with all that District One needs?
No one knows everything, but I think I know quite a few of them.
Okay. Joanne, tell me why I should select you as representative of District One.
I think you should select me, because I feel as though I'm the best candidate for the job. I have the experience, I'm a team player. I'm gonna do what's best for the city of Odessa first, and then, second, I'm gonna do what's best for the citizens of District One. And I bring experience, eight years of experience, to the table.
Is there anything that we've not asked you, anything that you would like for us to know? In other words, I don't want you to leave here and say, gee, I wish I had told them this, I wish they had asked this.
Well, this may not be...this goes along with the process. When Reverend McNeil, and I feel, I have to say this, when Reverend McNeil...I approached Reverend McNeil about running for council. He told me he didn't know, he'd never run for public office, and I told him I felt like he would be a good candidate. I personally went out and solicited the fifty signatures that was needed for him to run. I was very hands-on in his campaign, during his campaign. Once he was elected, every day Reverend McNeil was at my house, and we were talking. Reverend, you know, go to the staff, we have a great staff with the city, be a team player, it's a give-and-take situation. And his comments were, Joe, you know, I don't know, and I said, that's okay, that's okay, I'm here to help you. And up until the time that Pastor McNeil's health failed him, he was consulting with me, I would say, daily, on, Joe, what do I do, what decisions do I make? I just needed the record to reflect that.
Anything else?
Thank y'all for interviewing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. And our last candidate will be Mrs. Vanderhoek. Did I say that correctly?
That's Vanderhoek.
Vanderhoek, okay. I apologize. Go ahead.
Mrs. Edith, why do you wish to serve on the council for District One?
Well, I...Sunday, Friday, I was sitting at my desk, and I was looking through the newspaper, and I saw on the front page that two people had submitted applications for the city council, and that the applications were due on Monday evening, and I decided then and there that this is something I would like to do. I...it's been a number of years since I've been in a position of leadership, and I miss it. I feel that I am a...I have good leadership qualities, and I would like to start being much more active in the community, so I decided to apply.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm just gonna go over the qualifications, same way I did with Ms. Littleton. You are a citizen of the U.S.?
Yes.
Okay. And you're just over eighteen?
Yes.
Have you ever been determined totally mentally incapacitated?
No.
Have you been determined partially mentally incapacitated?
No.
Have you been finally convicted of a felony?
No.
You've resided in the state of Texas for twelve months?
Yes.
You've resided in District One for six months?
Yes.
And you're registered to vote in District One?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Vanderhoek, what organizations have you served within the city of Odessa?
I came here only, well, it's gonna be three years in August, and I came here to teach ninth-grade biology at John B. Hood Junior High. So I came as a professional teacher. And I spent the first year teaching ninth grade, the second year I taught, I was a substitute teacher, I hadn't had my certificate yet. I had a certificate, but I had taught at the university level, and my certificate lapsed. So I substituted while I prepared for the certification exams, and I substitute taught at Odessa High School and Permian High School. And so that's really been my experience with the community. In addition, I have a business with my partner, and we do remodeling and redecorating in Odessa, which gave me a wonderful opportunity to see, really, the living conditions here in Odessa. And through my experience as a teacher, I got to know a lot of parents and students, and really kind of got a good idea of what the city needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that leads me to, because you said what the city needs, so you live in District One, so I guess, can you tell me what you feel that District One right now, is current needs are?
District One, there are a lot of abandoned houses, and I think it could look better, for one thing. And I would like to do whatever I can. I have experience on committees, I've written grants, I've edited books, and/or a book, and I believe I could help with that process, to try to get some money together to make the quality of living better for Odessans, especially those in District One. And really try to get more housing, more adequate housing. I think that's number one. I think a lot of people in District One are struggling, struggling to feed their families, to house their families. I think a lot of retirees are struggling. Just the idea of retirement scares me, frankly. I never thought about that, but one hospital visit could land me in the poorhouse. And right now, I'm right around the corner from retirement, and I really don't see it happening. So, and I know there are a lot of senior citizens in District One, as well as in all of Odessa, who probably feel the same way. And so I know there are programs out there that could help the citizens of District One, as well as Odessa.
Thank you. Here, Ms. Grant.
Okay. Please tell me why I should select you as representative for District One.
Well, in listening to everybody talk, I think I'm probably the newcomer here, but I come with quite a diverse package. I was born in Chicago, I lived in Chicago for thirty-eight years. I moved to a rural area in northwestern North Carolina. I went to graduate school in Knoxville, Tennessee, and I taught as well in western North Carolina. I taught in Knoxville, I taught in Bowling Green, Kentucky, I taught in South Texas, I taught in Dallas area, northern California, and southern California, and now in Odessa. So I've been in many different communities, I've listened to a lot of people, I've taught a diverse group of students, and I've gotten a lot of ideas. So the benefit of traveling is that you do talk to a lot of people with diverse backgrounds, and so I feel very gifted to have been through that experience. Finally, I decided to settle here, to call Odessa my home, and I would like to contribute to the city as much as I can. In other words, I'd like to invest all my energies to make this a very wonderful city.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything that we've not asked you? Anything you want to tell us that you think we need to know?
No, I don't think so. I think I've said about all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, this completes the interviews. So now we consider the appointment. Start with Mr. Bryant.
First of all, I think it's extremely important, and I thank all five of you for submitting your applications. I think the next thing that's extremely important is to tell you all how much I appreciate your involvement in the community, and your passion for the city of Odessa. I hope those packages that you have continue with your enthusiasm and your drive for the city, because that's exactly what we need. We've been given the task to select someone to take the place in District One. It's an extremely tough task, but it's a task that we need to make in order for the district to be represented, and we definitely understand that. But again, before I do say whom I would like to fill this seat, I again want to thank you all for your passion and your enthusiasm, and hope that come November, when this seat's election is back up, that you will all fill in and run for that position. Again, thank you. I feel very passionate about having Mrs. McNeil fill the role in District One, that her husband had so gratefully had to give up. So I would like, Mrs. McNeil?
Bill Verdu?
Well, first of all, I want to say the same thing. I mean, what Mr. Bryant said, I mean, he's almost like he's reading my notes. You know, I'm talking to Ms. Littleton and Mr. Benouelos, I've known Jesse for a long time, I already got to meet with Edith, but out of respect for Mr. McNeil, and out of respect for his legacy, I also vote for Ms. McNeil. I was, you know, like I said earlier, I had had a chance, I thought there was only two candidates, so I talked with Mr. Benouelos and Ms. Littleton, because I wanted to make sure I put a lot of effort into this decision, because it's not just yesterday, and...but I was really excited when I found out, you know, McNeil put her name in there, I was really excited when, after we talked to her, because she showed me that she has the capability, she has the drive, and I feel she would make a really good candidate, or a very good councilman. In saying that, I would also encourage everybody else, because that, to run in November, because at the end of the day, you have that right. I just feel that out of respect for Mr. McNeil, I would like for Mr. McNeil to finish out his term.
Mr. Gardner?
I'd also like to thank each one of you that we interviewed tonight. I've seen a lot of great qualities in each and every one. I think that there are great leadership qualities in each one. I understand also how it is to look and see some things in the city that you want to try to help and do things, because I was faced with that same thing a couple of years ago, and I thoroughly enjoyed doing what I've been doing and serving the city, and so I know it's very rewarding, and I understand where everybody is coming from. And I would encourage each one to get plugged in and find a spot that you would enjoy serving, and because we can use everyone. There's not a person in this room here that can't get plugged in, whether you're young, middle-aged, elderly, like the mayor. There's a spot for everybody. I have not found, and there may be some Bible scholars out there that can correct me on this, but I don't think that I've ever found in the Bible where it says that we get to retire. You know, I just, I think when I find it, that I'm gonna...there's just nowhere in there that says, I'll retire when you turn such and such age. So, community is a good place to serve and do that, and I think all five of you have a good place. On a personal note, a couple of years ago, my dad passed away. He was in the middle of his term as county commissioner, and he had talked about the person that he wanted to take his place, and he had his wishes, and out of respect for my dad and his wishes, the commissioner of the court... the commissioner chose the person that he, that's his successor. And that person is now having to run, and run on his own, and I don't think that that's a bad thing. I think it's a good thing. And I, too, out of respect for Reverend McNeil, I would like to see his life carry on, and take his position, and finish what he has started. I know that them being married together, and they talk about things. I know that they discuss city business and things like that a lot, so my choice would be to let her take that spot and carry on.
Ms. Craft?
Okay, it's my turn. And I do things differently, so I would like to talk to each person individually here. I want to start with, the first person we interviewed was Amy McNeil. And I want to thank you for being willing to step up and want to finish what your husband has started. I think that's very admirable. I want to look at Jose, and thank you for stepping up, and I'm so, so impressed with what you have done in this community, and your willingness to continue and to do even greater things for this community. And then I want to look at Jesse, and I want to say to you, you've got some tremendous ideas. Things that personally I had not thought about with District One and our community, and I want to thank you for that. And then I want to go on to Edith. And looking at you, I see myself. I taught school for twenty-six years. I taught in so many school districts. I could teach new teacher orientation with my eyes closed. Lived in twenty-two houses. Lived in three countries. Came here, decided to do more for my community, and ran for county commissioner, now the city council. I can never retire, so I encourage you to do the same. And then I want to look at Joanne, and I want to say to her, that when I first met Joanne, many, many, many years ago, I told her, you need to be in office. You are a leader. You know the needs of the community. You truly need to be in office. And she's had the experience, and needs to be back in office. Now, who do I pick? Well, I guess it really doesn't matter who I pick, because we've already got three votes. But I think going with what they've said, tradition across the nation has been that if the spouse would like to finish the term, that's what governments across the nation do. I will be very honest with District One and tell you, I think that... I can't say we, I can only say I, because I can't speak for anybody else. But I truly feel that when Reverend McNeil became ill, and we realized that he would not be able to finish his term, or maybe couldn't come in and work, really, at that time, we should have asked her if she wanted to step in and hold his seat. And if we'd done that, if I'd thought that, then we wouldn't have a time that District One would be without representation. I do want to encourage each one of you that come November, that you will run for this office, because there's not a single one of you that doesn't have tremendous qualifications to be up here, and we need you. So I would truly ask that each one of you run in November. You're just all marvelous. And I'll have to agree with y'all that, since Mrs. McNeil would like to finish the term, and it will be finished with the name McNeil. And again, I want to thank each one of you. And it's been one of the hardest decisions I think any of us have ever had to make, so...
I'd like to thank council for their comments and reiterate what they've said. You know, this is a tough decision anyway, and I've told council, you know, we don't win either way. But the one thing that I'm taking out of this is the admiration for the passion each one of you have. You know, we heard stories of helping the disabled, helping people in their churches, helping students, and we're a community. And that is one of the finer things about being a community. You know, I would have to agree with council. I think we need to leave it with Reverend.
I do not vote, so that is simply an opinion, but at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we allow Mrs. McNeil to be the District One representative.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, if I may, I also want to thank the other four.
We do have one more item under miscellaneous appointments. Horace, Ms. Ramaldo?
Yes. Will the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee appoint Dr. Henry Lyne? And will the Citizens Health Advisory Committee appoint Grayson Hankes?
Okay, do we have a motion? Ramaldo?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any more comments, Ms. Ramaldo? Then we are adjourned.